Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to begin tonight's city council meeting for November 24th, 2025. Tonight, the invocation will be by Mr. Roy Chapman. And by request, our Public Works Director, Mark Bates, will lead us in the pledge at this time. Please rise if you're able and silence your cell phones.
Evening, Council. Roy Chapman, Executive Director of Faith Health Appalachia and one of the pastors over at Redemption Church just over yonder. Would you join me in prayer? Gracious and generous God, as we gather in this season of Thanksgiving, we pause to reflect on all that has been entrusted to us, the communities that sustain us, the friendships that encourage us, and the responsibilities that stretch us towards something greater. May gratitude anchor our hearts tonight as we seek to serve faithfully and lead wisely. We give you thanks for this council, for all who labor for the good of this city. Thank you for the countless unseen acts of service that keep our neighborhoods thriving, and for those whose quiet compassion strengthens the fabric of Huntington every single day. Bless each member here with clarity of purpose, humility in decision-making, and joy in the work of public service. May this meeting be marked by unity of spirit and respect for all views, and as we approach each matter before us, grant us the wisdom to remember that gratitude is best shown through service and Thanksgiving through generosity. In your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick question, Mark. When was the last time you actually led a pledge in a city council meeting? Because you were chair for like 10 years. Yeah.
Aww. Nice.
Anyway, thank you, Mark. Next item is, call on roll Ms. Atkins.
Mr. Archer.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present.
Ms. Blau.
Here.
Ms. Holly.
Absent.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Mount.
Here.
Ms. Rumbaugh.
Absent.
Mr. Shockley.
Present.
Mr. Sweeney.
Absent.
Ms. Walling.
Present.
All right, we do have a quorum. Third item on our agenda this evening is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Walling, a second by Ms. Blau. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Farrell, good evening.
Good evening. Our report will echo what Roy was talking about, being anchored in gratitude. You know, Thanksgiving, obviously, is a time to be thankful for all that we have. When I was a kid, probably like many of you, like there were these things that we did in the classroom, these crafty things where you'd make like, you know, the fingerprint kind of turkey, the paint. We'd get coloring, crowns, and color in the cornucopias. And we had these gratitude wings, and you'd get the construction paper, and you'd make those rings with what you were grateful for. And I remember, at that time of year, I'd go back as a kid and watch cartoons, like Charlie Brown Christmas. And one that sticks in my mind is, there was a Schoolhouse Rock episode. Remember Schoolhouse Rock with the conjunction junction and how Bill becomes a law? But one of them stuck with me was when the pilgrims came over, they came across the sea, and they stood up to the king, and they ended up helping found this country. They demanded their freedoms, right? And we led to where we are today. And so I remember even as a kid thinking that that freedom that they gave us was something special, right? And as I reflect on it today, I still feel that way, especially about the freedom of speech. And we often hear about freedom of speech, and I don't know that we always like it because people sometimes say things that we don't agree with. From time to time here at this meeting, people will come and say things that we don't always agree with. And I think that's okay. Some people choose to talk about division instead of having dialogue. They show up online or wherever they are because they almost want to intentionally divide us. And that's their right, right? That's a freedom that we have, and I'm glad that we have. I am sincerely grateful that people have the right in America to come here and say what they want to say to all of us. I think it's important. But I'm equally as grateful that those aren't the people that represent the majority of Huntington. Those aren't the people that represent the heart of Huntington. And the loudest voices don't always speak, right? For what I know is the heart of this community. We're moving forward in a lot of different ways, and we're moving forward because there are people that are stepping up all over the city to do amazing things. I was in Harvey Town last week, last Thursday. They have not had a neighborhood association in Harvey Town since 2012. And Dakota Parsons, I hope he's watching tonight, organized the Harvey Town Neighborhood Association. I got to go speak with them for about an hour and hear from all of them. And to see the energy in that neighborhood that's been pent up was really exciting because they were engaged and they want their neighborhood to be better. For any of you that are involved in neighborhood associations, you know what that feels like. And I'm grateful that Harvey Town gets to experience that again. And I see that kind of spirit in all different places of the community. We're going to see it this week, I'll tell you about three. Tomorrow at the A.D. Lewis Center, they're going to be distributing Thanksgiving boxes on a first-come, first-served basis. We'll be giving it away at noon, and there's a lot of people that help with that. The mayor's office is sending volunteers and others, right? So at noon, A.D. Lewis Center tomorrow, I'm sure there's going to be a line of cars, people coming to get boxes. The Salvation Army on Third Avenue with Marshall Health Network and Buddy's Barbecue are going to offer a hot Thanksgiving meal to go tomorrow at 5:00 PM. The Huntington City Mission, every year serves their annual Thanksgiving dinner. All right, those are just three examples, and I can tell you that churches all over the city, nonprofits all over the city are doing things because that is the heart of Huntington. Those are the people that make this move forward because they're doing something important to help the community. When I was reflecting on what I'm most grateful for this year, I know this is going to sound simple, but this city is full of people that step up when it matters. The city can't solve, the city government can't solve all of our problems. I can't solve all of our problems. And every time that I've identified an issue, public safety, homelessness, flooding, trying to grow, anybody that I've asked for help, any group, any company, any person, I've gone and said, hey, will you help me do this? Every one of them has said yes. And it's amazing to me, if you think about like when we talked about homelessness, and we knew we had a challenge, we went to Valley Health, and they helped us lead an effort with many other partners, but they helped lead it, and now the hub's open. There are averaging more than 85 people a night there. And as we move into Phase Two, OVP and Marshall Health Network and others are saying, yes, we want to be a part of this. When we pledged that no veteran would sleep on our streets, the Department of Veterans Affairs helped with Mission Zero. And now every veteran can get a referral within 30 days for housing. Four Pole Creek remembers, you know, February came out of its banks. And when that happened, Campbell County 911, Mark Bates and the Public Works Group, other people in emergency management stepped forward to try to mitigate that so that the neighborhoods didn't flood anymore. When our streets were dark, right, we went to the neighborhood associations, Marshall University, AEP, and the lights were back on in a lot of places. 1,200 lights got turned back on because of partnership. This city is safer, is stronger, is better because people, the people in the city are choosing to work together, to partner, to solve some of our problems. And it makes me incredibly grateful because that's why we're here. That's why all of you serve, right? And that's what people, I think, want, is for a safer, stronger, better city. So with that, I'll say, happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Happy Thanksgiving to all of Huntington, and I'm extremely grateful for all of you. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is the Second Region Ordinance, 2025-0-36. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Article 116 concerning the management adjustment and resolution of claims against the city and setting guidelines for the payment of such claims.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Walling, a second by Ms. Teresa Johnson. I think she beat you. Mr. Dameron.
Okay, thank you. Scott Dameron, City Attorney. The ordinance you had before you deals with the approval of claims against the city. Historically, the city has had a liability policy with relatively low deductibles and high premiums. Before September 1st, the deductibles were $5,000 for auto liability and $25,000 for police professional liability. In August, you approved a new insurance policy under which the premiums are less than one half, between a third and a half of what they were before, but the deductibles are higher. We believe we can save money that way. The current deductibles are $50,000 for auto liability and $300,000 for other liability. So we are essentially self-insured up to those points. As it exists right now under Article 116, my office has authority to settle cases up to $2,500. This ordinance would grant my office in consultation with the mayor's office, or the mayor directly, to settle cases up to the deductible for auto, which is $50,000, and $100,000 for liability. Also, under the ordinance, my office would be required to file a report for any settlement that is over $25,000, basically providing the details of the claim and the reason for settlement. So we ask that you approve this ordinance so that we can go ahead with a new process for adjusting and resolving claims before the city that are below our deductible policy amounts. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Dameron?
All right.
Anyone from the public? Ms. Atkins, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh.
Absent.
Mr. Sweeney.
Absent.
Ms. Walling.
Yes.
Mr. Archer.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Ms. Blau.
Yes.
Ms. Holly.
Absent.
And Mr. Shockley.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number six is the Second Region Ordinance, 2025-0-46. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement, one, with the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, and Kiowa Interstate Planning Commission for the Bike Pedestrian Connector Project.
Move to adopt. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blau, a second by Ms. Lehman. Ms. Burns.
Good evening, Chair, members of council. This ordinance allows the mayor to enter into a three-party agreement with Kiowa Interstate Planning Commission, the Division of Highways, and continues the work previously approved by this council related to public improvements in and around the former ACF development. This agreement will broaden the scope to include critical improvements at 24th Street. Such improvements could potentially include the widening of 24th Street, signalization adjustments at multiple intersections, the creation of dedicated turning lanes, crosswalks, sidewalks, and lighting. If approved, the STBG grant funding will cover 80% of the project cost, saving the city $793,420. The remaining match of $198,355,000 will be paid from the Hy-Lawn TIP account, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kathy Burns?
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public? Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh.
Absent.
Mr. Sweeney.
Absent.
Ms. Walling.
Yes.
Mr. Archer.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Ms. Blau.
Yes.
Ms. Holly.
Absent.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number seven is the First Region Ordinance, 2025-0-44. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance authorizing the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain extensions, additions, betterments, and improvements to the existing public sewerage system, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. John Stump.
Good evening, John Stump, Steptown Johnson Bond Counsel for the city. Before you this evening, you have an ordinance that approves the financing for the Fourth and Thirteenth Street pump stations. This is the first reading of this ordinance. It does require three readings. You had previously approved these financings back in 2024, early 2024. However, due to cost increases, we've increased the total amount of issuing bonds under, for each project. Again, this is the first step of what is a four-step process. The ordinance itself requires three readings, and there'll be a supplemental resolution we'll bring back before you before any bonds are actually issued, and it will specify the exact amount of the borrowing.
Any questions for John? All right. We'll move that on to the second of three. Item eight is the First Region Ordinance, 2025-0-45. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance authorizing the refunding of the outstanding sewer revenue bonds, Series 2015A, tax-exempt, the outstanding sewer refunding revenue bonds, Series 2022A, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. So this is the second ordinance that also requires three readings, with the supplemental resolution being the fourth action that'll be taken or presented to the city council for approval. This ordinance authorizes the combination of the stormwater system and the sanitary system into one utility, and authorizes the refunding of certain bonds, refinancing of certain bonds that are presently outstanding, secured by those two separate utilities, combining them into one financing. So the reason you all have previously approved this back in 2024, however, again, due to increases in inflation, we're bringing this back before you in order to approve and not to exceed an amount of $16 million.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to amend. Mr. Stump has graciously provided us with a document that has the amendments outlined in red line. I'd like to make a motion to amend as presented by council, so I don't have to read every single amendment.
Second.
I have a motion to amend by Ms. Mount, a second by Ms. Walling. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And it is amended, and we will move that on to a second reading. Item number nine is the First Region Ordinance, 2025-0-47.
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding to provide additional police services to the United States Postal Inspection Service.
Mike, welcome back.
Thank you. Mike Charnaby, Deputy Chief, Huntington Police Department. Huntington Police Department is requesting your approval for Mayor Farrell to enter into an agreement with the United States Postal Inspection Service. This agreement will allow us to designate specific Huntington police officers as federal task force officers to work directly with United States Postal Inspectors. This is to attack a major, high-volume supply route of narcotics that's flowing directly into our city through the mail. This partnership allows us another layer of federal focus and resources for the Huntington Police Department and for our city to provide significant and direct advantages. We will assign one of our existing drug unit detectives to serve as a federal task force officer. This MOU requires our detective to work at least 24 hours a week with the United States Postal Inspection Service investigations. This is to ensure that HPD has an officer with consistent primary focus on dismantling these mail-based drug operations. This is a powerful force multiplier for us. It will provide both direct financial and logistic support. The Federal Postal Inspection Service will fully reimburse all overtime worked on task force cases for that officer. They will also provide a direct stipend to the Huntington Police Department to cover the cost of a vehicle for this task force officer, up to $16,000 a year. They also provide necessary federal equipment like cell phones and computers for their investigations, and the use of the forensic lab that the United States Postal Inspection Service has. This will also generate federally funded training for narcotics interdiction. Furthermore, the MOU ensures that these assets will be equally shared with both the federal agency and the Huntington Police Department, averaging a 40/60 split, providing even more support for investigations and cutting off the flow of drugs in Huntington. For all these reasons, we ask to allow the mayor to enter into this MOU. Are there any questions?
Any questions of council? All right, we will move that to a second reading. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next item is item number 10, Resolution 2025-R-107. Ms. Atkins.
Resolution of council approving the work authorization for consulting and design services by Stromberg, Carrigan, and Associates Incorporated for improvements to Third Avenue and 24th Street as part of the H-Biz Economic and Revitalization Project in and around the former ACF sites.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Linda Blau, a second by Ms. Walling. Ms. Burns.
Good evening again, Chair, members of council. This resolution is kind of a sister document to the ordinance you just adopted. This resolution allows the mayor to sign a work authorization agreement with Stromberg, Carrigan, and Associates to create construction-ready designs for Third Avenue from 24th to 22nd Street, and from 24th Street from Third and Fifth Avenues. The work order continues the work previously approved by this council and will be related to public improvements in and around the former ACF site. These designs could potentially account for changes resulting in the widening of 24th Street, signalization of those intersections, creation of dedicated turn lanes, crosswalks, sidewalks, and lighting. The grant-supported project is funded 80% with the Kiowa Interstate Planning Commission STBG funds, and the 20% match will be from the Hy-Lawn TIP bonds. The total cost of this is $711,775,000. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of council?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment, because we talked about this, H-Biz, if you got a website, H-Biz started a decade ago. Like this, this is, I mean, the wheels of government turn slowly, right? Sometimes it works in our favor, sometimes not, but I just think it's a testament to the resiliency of the city that we kept pushing on this, and here we are, a decade later, we're going to have like drawings soon, right? That's really exciting. So I appreciate all your hard work on this because I know it's been a team effort, and I'm excited to see the outcome. But I think the city's website does a great job of outlining all the different, it's really pretty awesome if you go back and look at all the things that have happened to get us here. It's a lot of work, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 11 is a resolution, 2025-R-108. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution for budget revision number two of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 general fund budget.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Walling, a second by Ms. Lehman. Good evening, Mr. Arthur.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Scott Arthur, Senior Accountant for the city. What you have before you is the second general fund budget revision for your approval. Federal grant revenue has increased by $6,866,965 to account for the following grants: $1,201,965 for the planning portion of the downtown streetscape project, $4,165,000 for the Westmoreland Fire Station, and $1,500,000 for continued renovation of the Pritchard Building. State grant revenue has increased by $106,428 for the previously approved commission and drunk-driving prevention grants. Other grant revenue has increased by $125,000 for asbestos and abatement testing for brownfield revolving loan field properties. Federal grant expenditures are increased by $6,866,965. State grant expenditures are increased by $106,428, and other grant expenditures are increased by $125,000, and all of those mirror the changes in revenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 12 is a resolution, 2025-R-110. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Morgan Hood to a first term on the land reuse agency.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Johnson, a second by Ms. Blau. All right. Personnel.
Yes, the Personnel Committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 13 is a resolution, 2025-R-111. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Tyron Ty M. Holmes to a first term of the Huntington Human Relations Commission.
Move to adopt. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Archer, a second by Ms. Lehman.
Mr. Chair, the Personnel Committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions on the appointment from council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 14 is a resolution, 2025-R-112. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to accept the conditions of the fiscal year 25, Safer Outcomes, Enhancing and Deeskalation in Crisis Response Training for Law Enforcement Grant in the Amount of $350,000.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Arthur, a second by Ms. Ally Lehman. Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Charnaby, Deputy Chief, Huntington Police Department. The Huntington Police Department is requesting your approval for Mayor Farrell to accept the terms and conditions of the FY25 Safer Outcomes Grant. This Department of Justice COPS Office Award provides $350,000 in funding with no matching funds required from the city. The grant period runs from October 1st of 2025 through September 30th of 2027. Funds will support our project as an initiative to enhance officer readiness, to improve crisis response, and to reduce use of force incidents. This project includes virtual reality training equipment, a full-time training coordinator, and immersive deeskalation instruction for all sworn officers and our crisis intervention team members. This award strengthens the department's commitment to innovation and training and safer community outcomes. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Deputy Chief?
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 15 is a resolution, 2025-R-113. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution declaring the official intent of the city council of the city of Huntington to reimburse expenditures made prior to the issuance of bonds or other obligations.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Linda Blau, a second by Ms. Sarah Walling. Ms. Burns, good evening.
Yes, good evening again. So this reimbursement resolution is a follow-up step from the city establishing the excess sales tax TIP district. So adoption of this resolution will allow for eligible costs to be captured for potential reimbursement for eligible public expenses related to the development associated with the Foundry or formerly called the ACF site, not to exceed $5 million, with $4 million dedicated to the former parking lot development. Eligible costs may include items such as relocation of utilities, stormwater and sanitary lines, soil and site work, and other eligible infrastructure requirements. And we have Bond Counsel John Stump here this evening if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kathy Burns or John? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 16 is a resolution, 2025-R-114. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Suzie Agee to the first, to first term on the Huntington Municipal Parking Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Linda Blau, a second by Ms. Sarah Walling.
Mr. Chair, the Personnel Committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions of council on the appointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 17 is a resolution, 2025-R-115. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of H. Tony Stroud to a first term on the Huntington Municipal Development Authority.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion, I think Ally beat you. And a second by Ms. Ally Lehman. All right. And one more time, Ms. Mount.
Personnel committee met and voted to forward this one to full council with favorable recommendation as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of council on the appointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. That brings us to item number 18, good and welfare. Just a reminder who signed up, five minutes. Ms. Mount, are you timing me?
My phone, it's on the charger in there. How many, it's one person?
It's just one person.
We can eyeball it.
Yeah.
We'll get it close.
I'll make it noise, how about that?
Sounds good. All right, sounds good. Ms. Atkins.
We do not have anyone on the sign-up sheet for the residents portion. And we do have one for the non-residents, Glenn Myers.
Mr. Myers, good evening.
Good evening, council. My name's Glenn Myers. One October 2025, I took over the president of the Capitol County Fair. So a little bit about myself, I did 26 years in the military. It's common courtesy to introduce yourself so you guys know who I am and where I'm coming from. I'm about as politically incorrect as you can be, because I was an enlisted man. This was an officer's job to make this speech. But now that I've retired, I've gotten into the fair real big and heavy, and like I said, I was voted in as the president, and kids are my passion. So I'm here on behalf of the fair to, I think, you guys are the biggest city in our county, and from my understanding, we have very little relationship. So I'm trying to build a gap, bridge a gap, where we get you guys involved, as well as the businesses of Huntington, and I have a vision, a long-term vision, as long as I stay in, of bringing stuff to the inner-city kids with the animals. Because I, like I said, 26 years in the Army, you take an old farm boy from West Virginia in battle, he brings a whole lot more to the fight than that guy that came from a big city and never did anything. Graduated high school, joined the military, he only knows that one thing. So I think it's a great opportunity to enhance those kids' futures and give them a path ahead in life, as well as we offer scholarships. The 4H, the FFA, and the fair, we all do scholarships for kids, so it'll be a leg up for them as well on the future if they choose to go the school route. So here I am, I'm just trying to put my face out and establish contacts where I can start talking to people, because I feel, I've been with the fair for five years after I retired, and it, I feel that it's progressively going downward, and I want to turn that around. We have several new board members with the fair, and all of our visions are pretty much aligned, and we just want to make it better. And I think the city of Huntington, as well as businesses of Huntington, can help us get where we need to be. And I just, I want to start building that bridge. So that's, that's all I have.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to waive the rules to ask two quick questions?
I have a motion to waive the rules. Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Sir, I just wondered if the dates are set for the fair next year, and if it's still going to be out at Pumpkin Park? We can at least get the word out about that for you, and then I'd love to talk about how we could help.
The proposed dates, which will be voted on two Mondays from now, are July 20th through the 25th. And yes, it will still be at One Pumpkin Way Park. And something else that I forgot to mention, we have a parade scheduled on the 7th, and we're trying to make it as big as we can. It's a huge thing that people's wanting to see brought back. We brought the fireworks back this year, so that was another big, big thing. So we're trying to, trying to get back to old things to get the people re-energized with it. But to answer your question, those are the dates. And following parade is Cookies with Santa at the 4H building.
Oh, the parade is on December 7th. Oh, cool. Okay, great. Great. I love a parade. I love the fair too. Thank you.
And I'd love to talk to you a little bit more after the meeting. If you're going to be here for a minute, this shouldn't take very long. I got some other little points that I could maybe help point you in the right direction to help you out. All right, anyone else from the public? And that closes the public portion. This time, I'm going to start with Mr. Jason Arthur.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to encourage everyone out to our annual Christmas tree lighting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Want to start off by that, that's, some of us missed some things tonight by being here at Ritter Park, but this is always a great tree lighting, and it's right there in the heart of downtown, so I would encourage everyone to that. As always, I want to thank our police department, firemen, and public works. To the people of Westmoreland, the fire station is still progressing very fast, doing very well. Try to keep everyone updated on that, and most importantly, I hope everyone has a blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Ms. Ally Smith, Mount.
I love me a good county fair. I'm from a very rural part of the state, and I tell Sarah's story sometimes, she's like, man, I'm country. But I'm proud of my roots, but I love me a good county fair.
It's always out of jealousy. I love that.
So a couple of things coming up. It is tis the season. We have an online raffle going on that is pretty amped up. It is two box seats for Candle Nights, two tickets to Mountain Stage featuring the Bacon Brothers, which I did not, that is Kevin Bacon himself. A night at the Doubletree downtown here, the night of Candle Nights, a night at the Holiday Inn at the Civic Center in Charleston after Mountain Stage. Gift cards to the Jockey Club, True Soul Boutique, the Shala, Hotwick, and Breathe here in town. I think I got them all. And then 1010 Bridge in Charleston for that Monday, the day after Mountain Stage. It's an online raffle. It's to benefit Harmony House so that we can work to further our mission to get folks off the street. And then Candle Nights is actually December 6th. It's at the Keith Albie. It's the first time they've had it in person since 2019, I think, so since before the pandemic hit. So it's going to be a really great event to have downtown at the beautifully new renovated, I mean, it's just stunning in there, Keith Albie Theater. So that's December 6th. And then December 20th is the Jewel City Crawl, which is a quarterly effort to get folks downtown shopping in our local shops, and then all over, actually all over the city. I shouldn't say just downtown, because we have folks in the West End, in Barbasille, so it's really a community-wide event to get folks shopping local, because it really does make a financial difference in our local economy. That same day, we're going to be having a Santa's Workshop at the Progress Building, where you can get your gift wraps, gift wrap, and come have cocoa and cookies and meet Santa. That is also, the Santa's Workshop is also a benefit for Harmony House as well. So we are looking forward to all of those things, and I hope everyone can stop by.
Mr. Archer.
I'd like to personally thank Chief Watkins. I know he's absent tonight, but he helped me out in a situation. His 911, and also his HPD officers helped me in assisting a respected Huntington family who were in a little bit of a mess a few Saturdays ago. So on a Saturday morning, I called Chief Watkins and asked him for help, help this family with communicating with a Florida Police Department that he didn't know, and he reached out and settled this communication dispute with a family who was caught here with, just needed help in this tough situation. And he helped out immensely, and so did other officers HPD, and we got it resolved for the Huntington family who was in a real lurch for a second. And it was immensely helpful for that family. I just helped him on a Saturday morning. I know he was driving, he was going somewhere, and he was on the car. So I want to extend that to him. I appreciate that very much, and so does the Huntington family who I helped out. And just everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Ally Lehman.
I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And just watch, watch, I know all the kids are out in Kaplan-Wayne County out of school, so, you know, slow down. There are all the kids playing around, so everybody have a good holiday.
All right. Ms. Linda Blau.
First of all, let me quickly apologize for the clunk, and I know we're not supposed to use phones, but I'm kind of glad that I quickly texted someone. I just want to say two things. One, next Tuesday, December 2nd, is our Hy-Lawn Neighborhood Association Christmas Party. It's at 7:00 PM. We will have food. Any Hy-Lawn resident is encouraged to please come, just come and hang out, have some food. We'll have some Christmas music, and a basket raffle. That is next Tuesday at 7:00 PM at Community of Grace Church on Third Avenue and 28th Street. Also, the clunk was in reference to, so the Huntington First Church in Nazarene is having a Christmas bazaar, which I thought was this Friday. Luckily, I quickly snuck in a text and someone messaged me back, it is actually next Friday, December 5th. Still Waters Coffee will be there. They will have lots of baked goods. There will be crafts. It's a good way to kind of help support some local crafters, local coffee company, get some Christmas shopping knocked out. It is December 5th at the Huntington Church of the Nazarene, which is at 30th Street and 3rd Avenue. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and I too would just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's all.
Ms. Teresa Johnson.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Sarah Walling.
Earlier this, well, last week, I guess, my days are all screwed up. It's a holiday week. But last week, the Junior League of Huntington went and had our annual Friendsgiving with the young women at the Golden Girl Group home down in Kenova. That has become a tradition for the members of the Junior League. It's always such a good time to get to sit and to know those young ladies and to hear what they want to do. I had the opportunity to talk with two girls who are taking an American Sign Language class at Spring Valley and are very, very passionate about it, and it was just really cool to see that sort of engagement and interest in learning about other cultures and communities and everything. I say all this because they, what they do at Golden Girl is nothing short of incredible. If you haven't been down there to meet, I mean, I think we probably all know Nikki Thomas at this point, but the girls who are in Golden Girl's care range from 12 to 18. They have all been removed from just tragically abusive or neglectful situations. They still have the best attitudes. The staff is amazing. They have evolved to build an apartment complex for girls who have aged out of their care and are maybe going to Marshall or doing something like that. They also are running a consignment boutique and an event space to teach the girls practical, real-world life, you know, job training skills. They are having a Christmas fundraiser right now to make sure that those young ladies have really good Christmases. They're hoping to raise $200 a girl, which, these are pre-teens or teenagers, and $200 a girl does not go very far when you're talking about girls in that age range. So if you are so inclined, their website is GGGH.org, and you can donate there online. And again, if you can go down there and see what they do, it's amazing. It'll warm your heart. And I also want to congratulate Terry Deppner-Harden and her team at the Keith Albie for a very successful Christmas at the Keith event. The Keith Albie is stunning, and the Christmas trees were amazing. And I've long been a fan of the festival of trees and trains over in Ashland. And when I first heard about this, I told Terry, oh my gosh, we have our own Christmas trees now. So it was beautiful. It was wonderful, and I look forward to it coming back bigger and better next year. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Continuing with a lot of the holiday things in our districts. The Gallagher Village, if you've not drove by around the holiday season. Kim Williamson, our Neighborhood Association President, and her crew, they do a great job decorating that square in front of the 911 Center. On the 13th of December, Cookies and Cocoa with Santa, and it's open not only to the Gallagher Village kids, but others as well. Like I said, if you drive by, it's, they decorate it very nice. And I want to just say, you know, thoughts go out to our missing council members that are not with us this evening. They have some of their own issues and things that they're dealing with, so thoughts and prayers with them this evening. And ladies and gentlemen, happy Thanksgiving. With that, I'll have a motion adjourned.